Seventeenth, roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Meskey.
Chuantas.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Blaueman. Nelson.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Since in hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next we have the consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of June 3rd, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of June 10th, Planning Commission minutes of June 5th, the accounts payable report, May 30th through June 12th, an application for appointment to the Planning Commission of Rhonda Addison, council's acceptance, a monthly building report for May 2019, and for council's information, the Inbeston-Wilmer Board Meeting summary of May 22nd, and the Charter Commission minutes of August 28th, 2018.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the consent items discussion. It takes five votes because we are appointing somebody to the Planning Commission, so just so the councils are aware of that. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next we have the introduction of interim city administrator, Mr. Holland.
Well, real briefly, Mayor and Council, we have a special guest with us tonight. We have Brian Grammets. He is going to be the interim city administrator for the next few months. And some of you I know have met and talked with him, and so we've wanted to welcome him aboard tonight officially, and, you know, look forward to having him work with you. And he comes from New Ulm. He'll be commuting from there, and he was a city administrator manager there for seventeen years. And so he has served in as an administrator position for numerous decades. So he has a lot of experience, and most importantly, he has Minnesota experience. And so we wanted to welcome Brian here tonight. And maybe Brian can say a few words, and then if you have a question or two, you can ask him. So, Brian?
Thank you.
Good evening. Those that have met me already know I'm a man of few words. It's like the polar opposite.
That's a different guy than I am at.
Yeah, that's a really different guy. I, if you don't cut me off, I probably won't stop talking. But I'm looking forward to meeting with members of the city council. I've met with a few of them so far today. This is like the fourth day on the job, so I'll continue to do that. And I look forward to meeting members of the community and their various volunteer activities, or supportive activities, or business, you know, positions in the community, as well as as just anybody who wants to listen to me talk, I'm always available. So I appreciate your vote of confidence in fulfilling, you know, six to eight months here in the future while you go through your process of advertising and filling the city administrator position. And I guess I'm just gonna say I look forward to it. And we'll see how this all turns out, but I think it'll be a very positive experience for both me and you. So, thank you.
Good to welcome aboard. Councilmembers, any questions?
Just welcome.
Well, we're glad you're here, Brian. And I know you're still working on trying to get your computer working, so hopefully we get that working.
Yeah, yeah.
My understanding is you'll even get an office next week instead of having to sit out front.
That's very true. I found out that I can get emails, I just can't send any out, so, you know.
Sure, sure. Well, that's good, that's good.
I'm fifty percent there.
Yeah, you're about halfway there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe in another month, we'll have you having a computer that works.
Well, I think by tomorrow. I think by tomorrow.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Okay, next we have Wilmerfest presentation, Mr. James Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Calvin, members of the council. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to come up and speak with you to talk a little bit about Wilmerfest. Allow me to get this on the screen. I have three lovely young ladies with me as well. Our reigning queen of festivals, Aqua Princess, International Princess, we'll let them talk in just a moment, but we are poised to start our seventy-fourth celebration of the city of Wilmer. This year's Wilmerfest kicks off tomorrow night with a wings-eating contest at Roughs. So remember I said we were not gonna do Tuesdays anymore? Okay, we're doing Tuesdays again. So we're cramming more things in as much as we possibly can. But the reason we're here tonight, once again, is to say thank you for the opportunity to represent Wilmer and represent the residents of Wilmer, and your support in the work that we do each and every year. There's a lot that goes into this event, so not only from the city itself, but all the different divisions within the city. The Police Department, the Fire Department. I tell you what, Gary Manzer and the Public Works Department, all the work that they do to help us get ready for this and prepare for this, facilitating all the different events and all the different things going on throughout the city, especially with a lot of the construction going on right now. It's gonna make it fun and very interesting. We do have a couple of fun new things this year, including a three-on-three basketball tournament that's being hosted by Community Christian School. We talked about the wings-eating contest. We're very excited to see that Caris Health and Rice Hospital are doing a little kids' half K as part of the Downtown Block Party with the J.C.'s on Thursday night. So a lot of different things for a lot of different people, and a lot of opportunities to get out. We would ask that Mayor and members of the council do their best to get out and help us support this event and represent the city of Wilmer at the different various events we have. Some of the big ones and the ones we'd really love to see you at would be our flag raising that celebrates our sister city in Framery's Belgium. That happens on Wednesday morning. Of course, the block party as much as you can. The Wilmer Stingers Game, that is Friday night. And if you can be there to help represent with the various dignitaries that are coming in from other area festivals, including Aquatennial, Cambridge, the South Dakota Snow Queen Festival. We do have tickets for you for that event too, but we need you there to help represent the city and represent Wilmerfest at that event. And then, of course, the coronation and the parade. And I think we're working on, Gary, are we right? We're working on a trailer for the council?
Yeah, we just don't know how we're gonna do it yet.
Well, I promise we'll strap you down and keep you safe, okay? We'll make sure that that happens. But to definitely be part of the parade and obviously the lot of fun that goes on on Saturday. I'm gonna stop talking because I'm already starting to lose my voice, and it's only Monday of Wilmerfest week, and turn it over to these lovely three young ladies.
Hello, I'm Carly Holstein. I'm the 2019 Wilmerfest Aqua Princess. And we want to thank you again for letting us speak tonight. We are so excited to represent Wilmer this week. It's a beautiful town, and we absolutely love it. So we are so proud to have been able to be the ambassadors for this year. Because we love it so much, we want to share just a couple memories of the year that we've had because we have had such a quick year, but such a fun year. So we want to share those with you. So I will let them introduce yourself, theirselves, before we get started.
Hello, I'm Stacy Banks. I'm the 2019 Wilmerfest International Princess. I just want to say thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leslie Alvarez. I'm the 2019 Wilmerfest Queen of Festivals, and I just want to say thank you for allowing us to be here and to share these wonderful memories from our year.
So not only do we get to go places with these two other lovely ladies, we get to celebrate our town with other royalties. We call ourselves the Royal Family. We have three ambassadors, and then we also have two junior royalties. We have our Junior Prince, Oscar Lopez, and our Junior Princess, Harper Wilson. Then we also have our Senior Royalty, Gary and Sharon, and they come all around Minnesota with us and on our float, and we have a really good time.
All right, we obviously do a bunch of parades, and it's just a really good time to see other communities come together and also represent our community as a city of Wilmer. And some of my favorite parade memories would be the Aquatennial Torchlight Parade. Oh, it was so amazing, it was so beautiful. There were so many people. And I also liked the Paintsville Parade, which was really surprising for such like a small town. There are so many people there, and it was awesome to see so many people come into their communities. And I also really liked the South Dakota Snow Queen as well. And these ladies can share their favorite memories as well.
We'll talk about this later too, but one of my favorites was the Anoka Halloween Parade. We dressed up as a Candy Land float, so we got to celebrate that day. So that was probably one of my favorites.
I think one of my favorites was actually just this past weekend. We got to spend a few days in Monavideo celebrating with one of the towns we have a really close relationship with. Okay, so if you look to the slides, you'll see a few pictures from different, like, sort of festivities that we had here in Wilmer. So we had the Celebrate Art, Celebrate Coffee. We had the Holidays Parade, some Rockin' Robins pictures, and then the Races. I think we could all agree that some of our best memories of our past year have been of things going on here in Wilmer, and it's just an honor that we can provide so many things that people can come out and see that we really are just a beautiful and diverse town.
We feel truly loved in our community, but we also feel truly loved in the communities that we visit. One of our favorites was the South Dakota Snow Queen Festival. We got to travel over to Aberdeen and spend the weekend there. We always talk about how this was one of our favorites because we really got to bond with the other royalty and the other dignitaries. We spent the weekend in a hotel with them. We got to travel all around Aberdeen and tour, and that was one of our favorite weekends. And then the royalty from Aberdeen is going to be visiting us this weekend, so we are so excited to be reunited with them once again.
Up next, you'll see a picture from what was mentioned before, the Anoka Halloween Parade. We got to dress up as Candy Land, and this parade was absolutely massive. People were, you know, crowded in on both sides, and everyone was dressed up. And I think the best part was just getting to spend a few hours before the parade, going around and walking and, you know, seeing people from other towns and just seeing how, you know, they really came together and dressed up just to enjoy the moment and sort of be kids again.
Okay, this is from this past weekend. This was up in Monavideo. And this was by far our favorite event because we were so close with the Monavideo girls, and we were just so excited for them to give up their crowns and stuff. And this really prepared us for our final week at Wilmerfest, for preparing ourselves to give up our crowns at the end of this week.
And I believe that is the end of our presentation. So we just really wanted to say thank you again for letting us come in and share these memories with you. It's been an incredible year, and just, it's kind of surreal just beginning the end of our last week. And I think we're all pretty, it's sort of a bittersweet ending. We're happy to pass down and let three new ambassadors sort of enjoy the sparkle magic, as we call it. But it's a little sad to, you know, be passing it down. But we just wanted to say thank you for letting us come and share.
Thank you very much, council. Any comments? Okay. I, of course, want to thank you for the good job that you guys have done this year. A lot of the events that I was at, you guys were there. I couldn't believe everything that you were at, from open houses at nursing homes and assisted living facilities to other things. Rockin' Robins, you mentioned that earlier. You were there representing Wilmer and everything, and with your positive attitude and all of those good things. And so, one last time, I get to apologize to Stacy for not dancing with hers. As you all remember, I mentioned before that Stacy had asked me to dance, and I said no, and my wife chided me along with basically everybody else I came into contact with. So thank you guys for being a good sport. Thank you for being great ambassadors. Thank you for what you've done to our community. And I apologize, I won't be at the flag raising. I'm heading to Washington DC as soon as this meeting's over, and going out there to do some lobbying on behalf of the city. So, but I will pick up events on Thursday night. So I'll see you all on Thursday night, so. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have our public hearings. And first is a assessment hearing for 2019 Street and Other Improvements. Mr. Manzer.
You have to bear with me, I'm pinch-hitting tonight.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing.
Okay, I might need some help here. Whoa, that's. Wait here. Okay, so we're here to discuss the street assessment projects for 2019. This is the assessment hearing. Purpose of this hearing is to review and explain the assessment caused of approved projects to obtain input from interested parties concerning assessments. So the improvement hearing was March 19th, and that's when council approved the projects going forward. And the bids were received and the costs were determined. So tonight's hearing is the assessment hearing in relationship to those, to those costs. On this line graph here, oops, something. Let's try that again.
It's going crazy.
Yeah. Okay, so on this line graph here, the top line reflects costs of reconstruction, and it goes back to 2008 and goes out to the current 2018. You can see the costs as they've been kind of rising slowly. And this year's cost for reconstruction is eighty-five dollars per linear foot. And then on the bottom red one, that's overlay costs. So that doesn't have as much underground work, and those costs are substantially less, at forty-five dollars a linear foot. So the assessment schedule will work as follows. In September, you'd get a reminder notice to, that you'll have your assessment to be paid. You're allowed to pay it in full before October 31st without interest, or make partial payments. Whatever you make a partial payment prior to or on October 31st will not have interest. If you wait and put it to the next year, then payments are put onto your taxes with the first part due on May 15th. And I believe that's spread out over a ten-year amortization, and it's a 4.3% interest. So Project A, 1901A, is the Fifth Street Southwest from 19th Avenue to the cul-de-sac to Dead End to the south for a cost of $432,130.94. Project 1901B, the project total, is all what we call the stub streets down on the southeast part of Wilmer. And 13th and 14th go from the Service Drive on Highway 12 to the south Dead End, south of Trot, which is about a block south of Trot Avenue. And then 15th and 16th Streets southeast go from Becker Avenue on the north end to the Dead End south, which is again just a block south of Trot Avenue. And that's a total reconstruction, and that's $2,790.172. Seventy-two dollars and six cents. Project 1903A is overlay of 15th Street Southwest from 19th Avenue southwest to the north to Trot Avenue southwest to a cost of $792,533.38. And Project number 1903B is the overlay of Civic Center Drive from Highway 71 north to County Road 9 northeast. That would be out in the Civic Center High School area. And then that's for $680,138.19. And then Project 1903C is the overlay of 19th Avenue from County State Aid Highway 5 to First Street South in Wilmer for a cost of $250,000. And that does include fifteen percent engineering costs with a 10% contingency. The total cost for both streets and utility replacement is figured into the city's share. So the total assessed projects is $4,944,974.56. The property owners are being assessed $1,812,877. And the city's share of this project is $3,132,097.44. Again, the reconstruction assessment per foot runs eighty-five dollars. That's for total reconstruction. And the overlay runs forty-five dollars per linear foot. I guess that's the end of the presentation I have, and if I can answer questions, I certainly will, or.
Okay, this is the public hearing. Is everybody in the public that was just to speak? I do have two letters that I have received, and I will read those into the record after the public has spoken. So Ms. Gilbertson, if you wanted to speak, you certainly could, or else I can read your letter into the record.
If you want to read it, otherwise I've got it here too.
Sure, perfect. Okay, go ahead, ma'am. Yeah, go up to the mic.
All right. I live at 1022 Southwest 15th Street, and I don't have much information here except that $3,000 would approximately be assessed. And I'm just curious as to, because it says people that benefit from this property. Well, I've got about a fifty-foot lot in a driveway, and I don't drive, so I don't. I think that's a really major road. And I'm just curious. I mean, I've lived in other communities for many years, and I've never had an assessment like this. Isn't this what property taxes are for? And I'm just curious as to the, I'm fairly new to Wilmer, but I believe property taxes are for roads, education, safety. And I'm, I'm just wondering why, as I said, I'm fairly new to town, why the roads are in such abominable shape? And if I don't, I don't know if anyone can address this, but for people that are on a fixed income, this is a pretty big chunk of change to just ask for. I just don't have $3,000 sitting around. And it's more, even if I did the ten-year period, my property taxes right now are around 500. So that would add an additional almost $300 to my property taxes. That's almost a hundred percent increase. And I think it puts people in a real hardship situation. So I'm just wondering if anybody can address why money isn't accrued to take care of these projects from property taxes and other sources of revenue, since that's the primary, one of the primary purposes of government, to provide safe roads and bridges? So I don't know if anyone can address that?
Yeah, we'll address that, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes?
Could I get your name, please?
Barbara, Barbara Weiss, W.E.I.S.
Okay. So your first question, and you can just stay, stay here and we'll try to get. So part of it will go to Gary and part of it will go to Ms. Thompson, also as far as some of your questions. So the first part is, is that the city of Wilmer assesses for street improvements. There are cities, a number of cities across the state, that don't assess for property, for, for streets, but Wilmer does. And so maybe, Ms. Thompson, you can explain the rationale behind that and, and as the city clerk, how we assess that and stuff.
The city of Wilmer has an assessment policy in place, and you are assessed, when there's a street improvement done, you're assessed for the street that your house fronts or your address side of your property for residential properties. Commercial properties are assessed on both sides if they're a corner lot.
Okay, and then Gary, can you talk a little bit about the replacement plan and how this came into effect of how it's now affecting our property?
Well, and I would just like to continue addressing this with my initial comment of every other community I've lived in, and thank you for clarifying that, because they did not have assessments.
Right.
They had management and managed the property tax as well, I guess, because the streets weren't in great shape. Is there any particular reason that, how long has Wilmer been doing this?
I don't know how long it's been doing it, ever since I've been around. I think, Mr. Olkins, I think ever since you've been around too as well, right?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city's financing plan for street replacement has been in place since 1990.
But we were doing it before 1990, or not?
1990 is when the present funding sources and plan went into place.
Right. Were they doing it before that, or not?
Before that, if bonds are sold for street replacements, be it in Wilmer or any other community, you have to assess at least twenty percent if you sell bonds without a referendum.
Okay, well, all that's a little bit out of my league. I'm just, I'm just a taxpayer on a limited income.
Sure, sure.
And, and I just want to address the fact that, as I said, that is a big chunk of change. I don't have $3,000 laying around, and I don't think it's equitable at all to add almost $300 a year tax burden to someone who's paying right around $500 in taxes. That seems incredibly excessive in one chunk for ten years.
So what our finance director said, Mr. Olkins, is basically the city has been using the same formula since 1990, is when the council adopted the current policy. I was told before the meeting by Councilmember Fagerly that the Finance Committee is looking at a different method of doing that. I don't know, no one's talked to me about what they're gonna, what they're gonna propose or what they're talking about, but they're talking about something else. I also have asked to meet with the Finance Director and the Public Works Director and the new city administrator to talk about an idea I have, but none of that has been approved, and none of that will be in place for this year. So we will follow the policy. The council established policy from 1990 is the policy that we will follow for this evening.
And are there provisions in place for people such as myself that are in a, I, I don't have the money? I mean, in the ten-year, is there any kind of recourse that I have at all?
Have you talked with the city clerk at all before?
No, I have not. I've never been through this experience before.
So there is a, there is an elderly tax deferment, correct? Can you go over the deferments, Ms. Thompson?
We do have a program that's available for senior citizens. It's based on your income. And if you meet that threshold, you can defer your assessments until your house is sold. You pass or, you know, move away from the house once it loses its homestead status. So I do have an application at our office, or you could call, and I could mail one out to you, and along with the income guidelines. And if you qualify, you know, you would return that to our office, and we would grant you that.
And does that have anything to do with the 4.3% interest that I was reading in there? Is that interest accrue through the lifetime of the?
It will accrue for ten years, and then after that point, it, it will stop accruing interest.
Okay, so the, the whole assessment could be deferred until my death or I lose homestead status, or?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. No, no, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Anyone else that wishes to speak? And if you'd state your name and your address when you come up, then it's easier for the council to know. And thank you, Councilmember Alvarado, for reminding me of that, so. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Doug Zanderman. I live on 704 19th Avenue. And I kind of understand the whole concept of assessments and the need for it. I guess my comment is not every city street is the same. You know, when you live on a small residential street, you and your neighbors benefit from having that street. But like 19th Avenue is, it's a busy artery into and out of the city. I don't know that I get the same benefit for moving on that street as somebody who lives on Dublin Street or, you know, some other street that's not nearly as busy. Is there any distinction for that type of?
Well, 19th Avenue, and staff's gonna have to help me here, but 19th Avenue was a shared project with Candyway County. And so I think the costs are shared with Candyway County on that one, is that right, Mr. Olkins?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, yes, you're a hundred percent correct on that. And it is taken into consideration, and it norm, it, it's assessed at a normal residential street for a busy thoroughfare like 19th Avenue. So it is reduced, it's not the total cost for doing 19th Avenue. So it is treated the same as a normal residential street as far as the assessment goes. But it is a, it is a shared project with Candyway County.
So Candyway County is picking up part of the costs? You're not paying the entire cost?
Yeah, I understand that.
Like, for reconstructing in a residential street would be, would be more expensive than what you're paying? Because Candyway County's picking up part of your?
Yeah, I understand that, but the rate, the forty-five dollars per square or per linear foot is the same, correct? I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily equitable.
It is the same?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the cost per foot for a reconstruction and the cost per foot for an overlay is treated the same on all streets that are in this project for this year. The, the total financing of overall, all the streets are taken into consideration, and that's how the rate was arrived at by the Engineering Department.
So we're apologizing a little bit, we're kind of bouncing around a little bit. Normally, these questions would be answered by the Public Works Director, but he's not here tonight, so that's why we're kind of bouncing it around a little bit, so. Hope you understand that.
Sure, yeah, not a problem, no.
So, so I misspoke, so you would be charged the whole forty-five dollars?
This is the one comment I'd make is that.
Gotta go to the mic, Gary.
Just the one comment I'd want to make is that.
Just the one comment I'd want to make is that resurfacing 19th Avenue, the cost is much greater than $45 a linear foot, just because of the street, the...
Size?
Yeah, the size and the depth of the asphalt. So it's a, it costs a lot more than what a residential street would be built at. So that, so in essence, you're paying the same cost of a residential street would be built at, but the street is being built at a much more durable level. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense.
Thank you.
That's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I have one more question.
Certainly, yes. Your name again, and your address again.
Barbara Weiss, 1022 Southwest 15th Street. I'm curious, because I'm not certain, about the side streets. I don't know if they're assessed, anything?
So you're assessed, your address side of your property? And so if you have a street that goes on both sides, so if you live on a corner lot, you're assessed on one side?
Well, actually, my question is more relating to, it says, consists of every lot piece or parcel of land benefited by said improvements. Now, I was sitting outside in front of my house today, and I was thinking about this, and Grace Avenue is right across from me. And they utilize 15th Street just as much as I do, because their driveways happen to be on Grace Avenue. And I'm just wondering if that comes into any kind of consideration at all? Because everyone that's on a corner, street type like that, is benefiting just as much from 15th Street improvements as I am. And I'm wondering if that's taken into consideration at all?
Yeah, they're just taking it into consideration, because anytime that the streets are done, you're assessed on the address side, so everybody in the city is treated exactly the same that way. So, so when you drive on Grace Avenue, it's the same as when you're on 15th. So people that drive on 15th, when you drive on Grace, you have access to that road as well.
Well, right, I understand that, but I'm, it says that that benefit the property improvement. So I'm just kind of, evidently, that's just the way the assessments go. But I thought, they're gonna get just as much benefit out of this as I am, they're gonna have zero tax burden. You know, the likelihood of them driving down Grace Avenue is slim to none. You know, they turn right there and go right in their driveway. And the likelihood of Grace getting anything done is kind of slim. It just seems kind of, not equitable for everyone that's benefiting the property, just by word, your wording here. You know, everyone that benefits the prop, that benefits the improvement, is going to be assessed, and that's really not the case.
Mayor?
Councilmember Osmond.
Maybe it would help if Mr. Manzer explained the rotation. That was a part that you didn't get to explain, of when we, when the different streets are done.
Okay, so the streets have all been raided, there's a rating that's been done on the streets, and if you, that information we have in our office, I can't tell you what the rating of your street was off the top of my head. But things that are taken into account, too, is the fact, if it's a thoroughfare through town and traffic load, and so that's, that's some of the considerations that are taken in when they do certain projects. It's like, the ones on the east end or 13th, you know, those are actually quite low-traffic streets that are getting redone. And then we picked up 15th Street coming off of 19th Avenue.
And going up to Trot, correct?
Correct, yep, yep.
And, and I'm wondering if that, because like you just said, that's quite a thorough street. I see FedEx trucks five, six times a day, I see semis, I see all kinds of stuff. Is that taken into consideration with the assessed value per property owner?
I couldn't answer how they come up with an assessed value...
Because it's not like it's quiet, I mean, it's not a hugely busy street. But it's a definite north-south thoroughfare.
I guess I can't answer how they come up with their assessed value on your property, but I'm sure that if you have a new street in front of your home, that increases the value of your property. If somebody is looking at a new home, it's gotta have a huge impact. If you talk to people, I get this call regularly, they'll say, hey, I'm looking at a street, and you can name the street, do you know when that street's gonna get reconstructed? So that's, I know it has an impact on the purchase of a home. I'm not saying that... Yeah, no, I know, I know. But I'm just saying, I do, I do know that that's how, you know, it gets justified, too, because it does have an impact on your value of your property.
So in, an answer to that is no, the people that are on the adjacent streets, cul-de-sacs and things like that are not being assessed. Would that be correct?
The people, the people that are getting assessed are the ones that have the address to the street that's getting assessed. So in other words, it would be a deterrent to own a corner lot if you got assessed on both sides of the lot.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Unfair, but good to know.
No, I said, it would be a deterrent to own a corner lot if you got assessed both sides, which you don't, you get just your property's address side. That's all I was trying to say.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Yes, sir.
No.
Mayor, councilmen, women, I'm Oscar Oaks, Highway 1300, Highway 12 East. Sorry for my voice, I screamed it all out before I came up here. Just to give you a little bit, from what I've heard here, apparently, we're being assessed on the address. My address isn't on any of these streets, yet I'm being proposed an assessment of $28,285.45. Just to put that into perspective, that's 1.56% of the entire assessment that you're trying to assess everyone. 1.56%. My building is valued at $209,000. That's 13.5% of the value of my property. And I don't have an address that's on any of those streets. I do have property that borders those streets, but not an address. I'm just curious why it's assessed like that. We bought the property five years ago. When we bought the property five years ago, we had to pay the final assessment that was due for the Highway 12 and the service drive, which was in the 20-some thousand dollar range as well, which we had to pay $6,400 of the remaining balance of that to purchase the property. So within five years now, we're getting another $28,000. If you add that into our taxes, that's almost more than the $5,000, $5,000 to $6,000 a year we pay in taxes. It's doubling my tax rate, which, if it was $300, it'd be no big deal. But when it's $6,000, it's kind of a big deal. So I'm just kind of, a couple of questions. Why, if my, if it's done by the address, am I being assessed? Why am I paying when we're not, you know, why is there, why are we getting assessed twice from two big deals? Is there any way to deal with that? Is there anything I can do to mitigate this, due to the fact that it's just a large sum of money compared to the value of the property for something that's not even addressed? I'll let you answer some of those questions, I might think of some more.
Sure. Well, I'm glad you lost your voice, so you're not yelling at us, so. Anyways, just want to point out that yours is commercial, and commercial is treated differently than what residential is. So when we're speaking, we're speaking generically as residential, so that does not apply for commercial. I would encourage you to go set up a meeting with our new city administrator, Brian, and he can...
And I might be able to get your computer to work.
Yeah. He can explain the options to you, and it might be best if you took those questions offline. And so Ms. Thompson, and then when Sean gets back, and then with finance director, I think the four of you could probably come up with something you can work out.
Okay.
In such a short amount of time.
It's a big sum of money for, you know, I only charge $35 to mow lawn, you know?
Exactly.
That's a lot.
Yeah, I think you put my, I think you put my boat lift in, too.
I did, I haven't even billed you yet, I'm gonna have to cash that in.
That's what I was just gonna say to you, when are you gonna bill me for my boat lift?
The price just went up.
$26,000 to put my boat lift in?
Yeah.
Anyways.
That was a deal. Hey, you agreed to it.
Exactly, right.
So just kind of...
Yeah, take it offline, I think they could probably, they'll be able to...
Okay.
Don't you think that's the best thing to do, Mr. Olkens?
We certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of council, can certainly meet with him and go through what options are available. As far as the values and stuff, I don't know, that's not something that I would know.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm Jeff Lebel, I'm at 409 14th Street, Southeast. And I had a lot of neighbors who had the same thoughts, that it wasn't really a necessary project, unfortunately, none of them showed up. But some of the questions I had is, is this gonna affect some of the storm water drainage in that area? And kind of the details of the project, what are we actually getting out of this, other than just a better road surface?
So we're fortunate that we have Sarah with us as well, so she might know some stuff on storm. And Gary, if you know anything on storm, that would help, too. Mr. Manzer?
What was your address again, sir?
409 14th Street, Southeast.
So I know that that area, that's total reconstruction, and at that time, they go through all the storm sewers and check for quality and replace as needed, you know, make upgrades as feasible. As far as particular problems in that area, I know that the 14th and Becker area can flood on a heavy rain. I don't think that that's gonna change a whole lot with what we're doing here. But as far as leads and catch basins and curbing, that'll be replaced and upgraded to meet the current standards.
And Sarah, I don't know if you know, isn't the size of the storm increasing there, too? Wasn't that one of the things, maybe a council member can remember from last year? Wasn't that one of the things we were told last year, is that they were gonna increase the size of the storm there? Does anybody know?
I don't know specific details of any of the street projects, sorry.
Okay.
I think you're correct, I think there was a redirect of some water over there, too, but you should probably call Sean.
Yeah, we're talking here a little bit, Councilmember Nelson kind of remembers a little bit the same as I remember, but what she's saying is she thinks there's a redirect of the wa, of the flow of the water? So it'd be something you should go in and meet with Mr. Christensen about when he's back in the office.
Yeah, is that something that could maybe be addressed in a letter to all those that are being assessed on the details? Because I know it's a big topic, and people, all they think about is the amount they're being assessed, and not what they're actually getting out of it. For one, I favor the potholes, because it keeps traffic slower, but...
Exactly, I hear you.
But anyway, things must...
Ms. Thompson, can we look at doing that, sending out another letter to the people down there? So they'd be the stub streets, if you remember from last year? The concern was on the stub streets? Can if we can just address if we're changing the size of those? And then, I wish Sean was here, I apologize. Does anybody have the drawings with?
He's gonna be north of the stub streets.
Correct, he's north of the stub streets, but the stub streets, that's all part of that.
Right.
Yeah, I don't have any drawings of just what the PowerPoint is, but I'm sure that information would be available to what the storm sewer changes would be, and it'd be real easy to obtain and get you information on what's, what's changing in that neighborhood.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, and in the past, I used to go in and look at all that stuff, but we kind of changed the way we do business up here now, so I'm not doing that anymore. So that's kind of off on public work safety, it's kind of their responsibility to look at that now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make comments? Okay, I have two letters, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
402 15th Street, Southwest. They want to hear you through the mic.
Okay, well, I heard me. I've been assessed $3,700 on 15th Street. And I understand that the property tax, the Wilmer taxpayers play, pay 50%, goes to the county, 30% to the school district, and the rest is left what the city's got. That's why there's not enough to pay for street assessments. What's the reason for that?
Mr. Olkens, can you help with that question? I don't believe those numbers are correct, but the percentage of breakdown between city, county, special assessments, and, I'm sorry, in city?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on the property tax that a property owner would pay, and it changes by year depending on the amount levied by each jurisdiction, but it had been about 20 cents on every dollar goes to the city. 50 cents on every dollar goes to the county, and the remaining goes to the school and other special taxing jurisdictions. The amount that the city of Wilmer has for property tax levy is roughly $5 million. That public safety budgets between the police and fire exceed that dollar amount. The overall budgeting process, which we'll be starting here now, in this, this month, will give that information available to citizens as well. So, I mean, as far as every tax dollar that you pay on your property taxes, about 20 cents out of every dollar comes to the city of Wilmer.
So you were right, your numbers were right.
Huh?
Your numbers were right. What you said, it came out.
I know. How come this, how come we pay million, the taxpayers in Wilmer, property tax, it all goes to the county and the school district, and what's left is for what?
Well, that's how, that's what we operate the city with. And, and one of the things that the council has been proud of is the fact that we've held your taxes down. And so there's an expense that comes with that, and I think you're identifying what one of those expenses is. So, yeah, so your numbers were, were pretty close to right. I thought, I thought we were closer to 24, 25%, but Mr. Olkens knows those numbers a lot better than I do.
I think, I think Wilmer ends up with less than 20%. Rest goes throwing away to everybody else.
Thanks for pointing that out.
I live across from Audrey's relative, Suzanne Nelson. I don't know what she got assessed, but probably less than me, her wide, her lot isn't as wide as mine.
It goes by how wide the lot is, and it's the same rate for everybody.
Okay, down next to me, there's that James House, that's been torn down a couple of years ago. They had a fire in it, and they tore it down on the corner of Candyway and 15th. Who's paying taxes there?
We would have to look at the assessment rule, and that's what the meeting is for tonight, so we're not sure on that.
We've got two or three years now, I suppose.
Any other questions on the assessment?
Yeah, I think it's too much. I mean, what we pay, I pay $2,000 in property tax, plus the $3,700 on top of that, you know? I've been retired for 14 years now, living on social security, I get state retirement, too, but I work for the state. I know.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
I'm not happy with it. I don't think the rest of these people are, either.
Anybody else wish to make any comments?
Thank you, Michelle Maraski, 508 Southeast 13th Street. I'm going to be, please don't throw eggs at me. I'm going to say thank you. I, I'm not excited about paying for 75 feet of street front, however, I do not like the potholes. They're, you know, my car is small, and my body is old, and I have to do a lot of jerking through my little half-street that I go through. And the other thing to point out to my neighbors on these stub streets is that our underground services are pushing 70 years old. 13th Street was installed in 1950. That is a full 24 years before I was born. So I, I think it's a good thing. I know that it's difficult, but I think there are things that the city has in place with deferments and options to help pay for that. So I just wanted to make that point. And again, just point out that we do have some aging services, and it's just a matter of time that something's going to go, and we should really be proactive.
Okay, thank you. I remember your comments from last year as well, so thank you. Additional comments? I have two letters to read to the record. The first one is addressed to Judy Thompson, the city clerk. Upon receiving the letter of the proposed assessment against us for the street project on 19th Avenue Southwest, we sent the letter, but the wording should have been "object" instead of "appeal," so we want to clarify that. We are writing this objection to our amount that we would owe, as we are age 76 and 75 years old. With a limited amount of savings and continuing higher costs of living each year, we would find it hard to pay the amount assessed to us for this project. Our approach does not come into our driveway from 19th Avenue, it comes in from 8th Street. When we bought our home three years ago, we did not, we did not realize the cost of the street maintenance for 29, for 19th Avenue Southwest. It'd be very hard for us to pay this amount, and we ask grace in this situation. Sincerely, Manville and Darlene Estwick. Well, Ms. Thompson, they would, I'm assuming that you talked to them about the senior deferment, so they're aware of that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did speak to them and did send out the application. application for the deferment.
Thank you. And then the other is from Carol Gilbertson. Mayor Kelvin, Councilwoman Schwantes, and Councilman Plowman. I am ready to request the assessment of $20,160 for Civic Center Drive improvements be removed from property 95-912-0952. In 2017, my land was assessed for the Lakeland Drive project of $10,000, which I am currently paying towards. To be assessed an additional $20,160 is unreasonable, as this property's only bare land. According to the property assessment, it is only worth $59,500. To be expected to pay $30,160, which is more than half the value of the property, is absurd. I'm asking the city to assess my property in the same manner they would any farm or residential property, and only assess one side of the property. The property does not have any street access to Civic Center Drive along the only 385 feet. I am asking that it remove the assessment for parcel 95-912-0952 for the Civic Center Drive improvements. And it's signed by Carol Gilbertson. Now, this would be a commercial property again, is that correct, Ms. Thompson? Do you know?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do not know what that property is. That was just a letter dropped off late this afternoon, and I did not have research on that.
Ms. Gilbertson, is that a commercial property?
It is, yes.
Okay.
It's the property adjacent to the trailer park.
Right, it's in the corner there.
In the corner.
Right.
Yep, so it's on Civic Center and Lakeland Drive.
Right. Okay. That's fine, you can bring it up if you choose.
Oh, sure. Sure. Yep. That is a commercial. That's own commercial. Yep, it's, so, then you get both sides. Yep, I'll discuss this with Mr. Christensen when he returns, we're hoping tomorrow. But, yep, I know which one that is now. Thank you.
If you'd like to show it to us, we can look at it, but you're gonna have to take it up with city staff. Again, this is something I'd encourage you to talk to our city administrator and staff about. I think that, that would be a better avenue for you to take. Unless the council thinks differently. We used to try to negotiate these before we got, we got to us, so.
I guess it's been referred somewhere.
Right. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Mr. Holland?
Mr. Mayor, just a procedural note while the hearing is still open. I believe the council is aware, as we've been through this process annually, that for every individual who appeared at the public hearing and objected to their assessment, and for everyone who has submitted a letter, the council needs to pass on those objections individually during this hearing. Although, the council is able to continue the hearing if it feels it doesn't have sufficient information to rule on each objection tonight. You can continue the hearing for all of them, or any one of them, or none of them if the council is comfortable ruling on each objection tonight. So, I can certainly help identify the individuals whose objections the council will need to rule on if you need that assistance.
Additional comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor, I've considered Mr. Oaks', is it? I've considered Mr. Oaks's comments to be an objection, so I would recommend the council rule on his.
Right, so I, I took it that Ms. Gilbertson and Mr. Oaks both were objecting, along with everybody else that has spoke, with the exception of 508 Southeast 13th. So, all the rest of them that I've got, I viewed as objections. Additional comments? Counsel, uh, sorry, public, any other comments that you wish to make? Because once I close it, it comes up here, and then, then we, we take care of it up here. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to council. Council, what are your wishes? I would recommend, if council is looking for a recommendation from the mayor, I would recommend that we refer the property on Civic Center Drive and the 1300 Highway 12 East to keep those two objections open until they have an opportunity to meet with staff.
Do we need a motion on that?
It all depends, fine, if you want to talk about the rest of them or not. So, Councilmember Nelson.
I'm just looking for clarification on the procedures, so if we leave those two open, we can close the rest and move ahead, or what? I didn't track with how you had stated that earlier.
Mayor, members of the council, the council needs to either rule on each objection individually in this meeting, or continue the hearing with respect to any properties it does not rule on to a future meeting, and there's some additional notice procedures the staff will have to follow once that happens, if it happens. So, you, you can rule on some of the objections and keep it open with respect to others. That is permissible.
Okay, so we would still need to keep it open and not do the next steps to award bids, correct?
No, we can award bids.
We can award bids?
Right.
Mayor, members of the council, it is not necessary that every objection be resolved before the council take action to award bids.
Okay.
They're not tied together, they're separate processes.
All right, thanks.
So, so if the council wishes to, to handle the objections, each one, it may be cleaner to do that in hearing some question from the council. So, the first address was 1022 Southwest 15th Street. Councilmember Ovrano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, our decisions, will that affect the deferments if they're seniors, so we can make the ruling? And if they're eligible for the deferments, they can still proceed with the deferments?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, I need a motion on the 1022 Southwest 15th Street. Are you gonna rule on the objection, or are you gonna have, or continue to leave it in the assessment hearing? Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're looking, we're at a loss for, if we overrule, what the correct language would be, so.
So, the language would be is if, if you want to continue the assessment hearing as it's been presented to you, at the $45 a square foot, you would find, give us the wording.
Mayor, the options for the council on any individual objection would be to find the objection well-founded and pass a, you know, order that the assessment be changed to some different amount than is indicated in the rule. To find the objection not well-founded, which would let the amount assessed in the rule stand, or to continue the matter to a future hearing.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we find the objection not well-founded and continue. Second.
Motion made and seconded to the objection to 1022 Southwest 15th Street unfounded. Discussion. Is this a roll call, or is this a simple motion? A simple motion, correct?
Simple motion.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying, I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson.
I think, just to clarify, what we, what we went through is that that property was not assessed at any differently than any other properties.
Correct.
So, whether we agree or disagree with the statements that were made, it does conform with how the assessments work.
Correct.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. The next is 704 19th Avenue. The objection was to the cost of the project and the benefit that's, that's, because it's a major street. That was the objection.
Mr. Mayor, I find the objection not well-founded and would make the motion that we move forward with it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move forward with 704 19th Avenue Southwest. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is 409 14th Street Southeast.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't count that as an objection, more of a question and statement. As long as we can get some more clarification on what includes, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, so the objection has been removed. The next objection is 805 15th Street Southwest. Again, was on the valuation of the assessment.
And again, I would find the objection not well-founded and ask that we move forward. Second.
Motion made and seconded that the objection is not well-founded. Councilmember Osmus.
I just wanted to just add the clarification that the assessment was fair and equitable to everyone that's on that street. Everybody's being assessed the same way, and would just encourage any of those that would fall under the exemption, the elderly, what'd you call it, the deferment, to proceed with that with city offices.
Motion made and seconded, additional discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next is 1300 Highway 12 East. It's the commercial property at 1300 Highway 12 East.
I think we should leave that one open until they meet with city staff.
Would you like to make that a motion?
I would.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to have the owners of 1300 Highway 12 East meet with city staff. Leave that open for discussion and bring back to a future meeting, and have staff follow up with the appropriate paperwork. Additional discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is the property address of 905-912-0952, commercial property on the corner of Civic Center Drive and Lakeland Drive.
I move that we keep that open until they have the opportunity to meet with staff and bring it back.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, the order of the, would be to approve the assessment hearing for 2019 Streets and Other Improvements, and to, with the exception of the two items that are not open.
I think we missed some.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I believe the first letter you read into the record.
Ms. Nelson, Councilwoman Nelson is saying I missed a couple.
I think there was another one on 19th Avenue, Manville, Eastwick.
He was on 15th. He was on 15th, wasn't he?
One of the letters you read was 19th Avenue.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
This is the last one we need to rule on.
That's when I think she talked about that deferment.
Okay. 801 19th Avenue Southwest. Counsel?
I would...
I'm looking for a motion.
Yep. You had the word. I would move that we proceed with the, the assessment as it, as it...
As presented.
Wasn't presented.
Second.
The intent is there?
That's sufficient.
Councilmember Nelson.
That's the one that I believe Ms. Thompson indicated she spoke with on the deferment, so we are addressing that.
Thank you for that. That was my concern, I couldn't recall the details of the letter, so thank you.
Thank you for reminding me of that. We have a motion on the table, additional discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize to interrupt one more time. Before you move on to the next motions, I would recommend that the council identify the, the next meeting or the meeting at which you want these to come back, whether it's the next meeting or two meetings from now. Because once we identify the date and time of the meeting at which these matters will come back to the council, that would be sufficient notice under the statute.
Well, we're gonna need assistance with that, Attorney Scott, because we don't know what the notice requirements are and what staff's timing is available. We don't know if they're going on vacation. So, in the past, we've tried to get this done in a timely fashion, but sometimes it doesn't happen, so I don't want to put staff on the, on the hook here, so. And we don't know about Mr. Christensen at this point, right? Is he planning on any vacations, or?
Can we just do two meetings?
Essentially, Mayor, members of the council, if you set a date tonight, that would be
sufficient notice. You wouldn't have to, staff would not have to follow up with additional notice. But you could always, if something happens and this matter isn't ready, I don't see why we couldn't submit revised notice changing the date. If staff were comfortable that they could bring it back in two weeks on July 1st, you could set it for July 1st, you could give it a little more time and a little cushion and say July 15th. But I do recommend just at least preliminarily identifying one meeting where they will come back.
Do you want to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we refer these items to the July 1st city council meeting. Second.
Motion made and seconded to refer the two commercial properties to the July 1st city council meeting, and have staff work with the two affected property owners prior to that and bring a recommendation back to the council meeting. Additional discussion.
Question.
Councilmember, favorably.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Scott, the people that object to this assessment, do they have any other options then?
I'm sorry, are you referring to the two whose objections are being carried over to the next meeting, or the rest of the?
The rest of them, too.
No, once the rule is adopted with respect to all but those two, their only remedy would be if they have properly objected and could then appeal to District Court.
Okay. So, have they done that, if they want to?
Their right to appeal would start, if they have complied with the procedure under the statute, their right to appeal would start from the time the assessment rule is adopted with respect to their property.
Okay, so after tonight, if we approve it, and if they disagree, they have that option, then?
Correct, if they'd properly objected.
Okay, that's what I was asking, so.
Okay, so I'll go back and I'll ask again for the, for the resolution to be introduced.
Have a motion and second, I don't think.
I'm sorry?
Don't we have a motion and a second for the date?
Do we have a motion and second on the resolution?
On the date to come back.
Not on resolution, no.
I'm sorry.
We did a motion and second on, to refer it to July 1st, but we didn't do a...
We didn't, we didn't vote yet. Right. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I misunderstood your question. Next is a resolution to approve the assessment hearing for the 2019, 19th Street and Other Improvements. I'll obtain a resolution for that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution for the assessment hearing for the streets for, I'm sorry, to adopt the assessment role for the streets for 2019 and Other Improvements. Discussion. With the exception of the two that we pulled out, objected. With the exception of the two that we pulled out, objected. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a resolution to award Project 1901A to Dunick Incorporated.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a resolution to award Project 1901, 1903A to Dunick.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is a resolution to award Project number 1903B to Dunick Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. When Mr. Manzer presented the document, there was a 1903C as well, but I don't have that in my sheet. Are we to have a 1903C as well?
It's $250,000.
Sorry again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we think we might have skipped one of the resolutions on the projects. Was it 1901B? City clerks did not record a vote on 1901B.
Okay, I'd asked that, and the two up here thought that I had not missed it, but I thought I had as well. Then 1903C is in Charlie. We have not done that one either. For $250,000, that's a shared project with Candyway County.
I don't have a 1903C. We have 1901A, 1901B, 1903A, and 1903B. We did 1901A, and 1903A, and 1903B.
Okay, when Mr. Manzer presented, he presented a 1903C as well. Mr. Finance Director Olkens.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the 1903C is contracted through the Candyway County, and so we would not be awarding a contract for that project. We have an agreement with Candyway County, a cost-share agreement, that's in place for the $250,000. They're contracting that project.
Thank you. Entertain a resolution to award Project 1901B to Dunick Incorporated.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Did we hit all of them? So, the council ruled, for those of you in the audience, the council ruled that the assessment role will be adopted for all of the properties with the exception of the two commercial properties. The two commercial properties will be addressed at the next City Council meeting. They have been held over, and so the property owners are encouraged to meet with city staff. It's the responsibility of the property owners to meet with city staff. It's your responsibility to set a meeting with them and go in and meet with them. So, they will not be reaching out to you, that's your responsibility to do that. You both, call down to City Hall and someone will be able to help you. So, I, or would you like them to start with Ms. Thompson, or do you want to wait till?
They should go directly to Mr. Christiansen, the city engineer.
So, we're not sure when the city engineer will be back, so why don't you just address it with the city administrator, Brian? He will help you and get you headed in the right direction. Is that okay, Brian? And I'm still practicing your last name, otherwise I would murder it otherwise, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Osmus.
So, that's for the two that are open, but for the ones that may have a deferment, for the elderly, they go to Judy.
They go to Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Yep. So, yeah, if you're looking for elderly deferment, the forms for that you would get from Ms. Thompson if you're looking for that. So, and she can help you, and there's income requirements tonight as well. She has all those details. Additional questions? Counsel? Okay. Next, we'll introduce an ordinance adopting a sales and use tax and motor vehicle excess tax. Mr. Olkens, our finance director. Open the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're here tonight for a public hearing on an ordinance to establish a local option sales tax. The hearing is to allow the public to give testimony to the implementation of the tax and the change of the city charter, to give a brief history of where we came from and to get us here tonight is that almost a year ago in July, a group of citizens came to the city council and asked your permission to put on the November ballot a question of a local option sales tax of one-half of 1% as well as a $20 excise tax on the sale of new and used vehicles. Between the July date passage of the resolution, giving them authorization to do that, and the November election, there was a public campaign and information where they went into the community and explained the proposal and saw that on November 6th at the general election, the question of implementation of a local option sales tax was presented to the voters. There was a total of 6,782 votes cast for the question of that. 61% was in favor of the ballot question of implementing and proposing a half of 1% local option sales tax and a $20 excise tax on new and used vehicles. From that point, the procedure was to then take the question to the legislative session, have Senator Lang and Representative Baker introduce bills in the state capitol, authorizing the city to be able to also implement this one-half of 1% sales tax and excise tax. The legislative session ran from February through May. As we know, there was a special session. Those bills were introduced and held over with the special session. The governor then signed it into law. And the procedure and the statute that was introduced requires the city to amend the city charter to spell out the procedures and file the correct paperwork with the state of Minnesota. The projects that were listed in the tax and the ballot question, there were six projects that are used. The ballot question also limited the amount of dollars that could be bonded, four to $30 million or 13 years for the implementation of the tax. The $30 million is a total amount of financing for six projects. It also would allow the collection of the tax to pay for any interest and physical charges on top of that dollar amount. But the six projects that were included in the question and the information in the legislation was $2 million for a community center replacement, $6 million for new athletic fields, $3 million for infrastructure improvement at Robins Island Regional Park, $2 million for a new playground and spectator amenities at Swanson Field Regional Park, $7 million for stormwater management, and $10 million for a new recreation and event center. The ordinance that is before you tonight was introduced at your last council meeting. We do have one minor change, and we have worked with city attorney Scott on the definition of a retailer. In the original ordinance and resolution, the retailer was a definition that was from our 2005 local option sales tax. They have since changed the legislation to the definition of a retailer. He felt that that was immaterial, and so there is no need to republish. The language that you have on your ordinance in front of you tonight has been revised, and so it will follow state statutes so that if the state of Minnesota changes the definition of a retailer, that that will then automatically follow that and be in compliance. So, the actions after any kind of taking public testimony, there'll be two actions that will request that you do. The first one will be a motion to make that definition change, and then the second will be to give the ordinance a number and publish it. With that, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions or allow the public to speak.
So, any members of the public that wish to speak? And then state your name and if you reside in the city or outside of the city.
Barbara Weiss, I reside in the city of Wilmer. Just from what I'm gathering here, this is another tax to raise $30 million, am I correct? For special projects. And yet, we're here with a road issue? That seems kind of incongruous to me. I'm just curious about that. That, this is what I was talking about initially. You know, to me, the taxes are to take care of the roads and things, and then we're doing all these other special projects while the roads are in such horrible shape. I may be, I might be missing the mark here on my understanding of what taxes are primarily for, you know, but it seems kind of ludicrous that we're assessing, you know, millions of dollars from the citizens to build roads, and then we're having another special tax to build all kinds of special projects. I just wanted to express how I feel about that. It seems kind of excessive, I would say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Additional comments? Can you name it if you reside in the city or outside of the city?
I have property inside and outside of the city. You know, just one thing I'd caution, you know, the whole point of doing this and creating all these things is to bring people into town. You know, when you tax, when it's a flat deal, and I don't know if there's any way to do this or not do this, but you know, I do dock sales, and I get calls all the time of people that live in a city that their taxes are up because of an assessment, and they say if I can deliver it, they'll go with me instead of their local dealer. That makes me kind of frown a little bit on what's going on. So, you know, just before you rule on something like this, to try to help the community, think about all the businesses that sell big dollar items that people are going to be going to other properties in other towns to buy simply because they don't want to pay the tax. So, it really does affect the local community, and the businesses here are what pays your sales tax. You know, target, obviously, people are buying $5 to $300 worth of stuff. They don't really care about the, you know, extra 20, 30, 40 cents. But when you're spending, you know, 30, 20 to $30,000, now you're into $100 to $200, and even on a half percent, it makes a difference. And some people just don't like paying tax. So, they do it just to scorn, you know, their fist at the man. So, it's, it happens. I get phone calls every day. So, just something to think about, about what happens when we raise tax. And I get that the community needs stuff, but, you know, how many playgrounds do we need?
Additional comments or questions?
Anthony Ammon, 820 Richland Avenue in Wilmer. As you know, I was a member of the Invest in Wilmer Committee, and I want to thank the mayor and the council for at least hearing us out and seeing us through to fruition. And I would just like to address any concerns that residents of the city have. Number one, our property taxes in Wilmer, and I think I showed this to you guys, when we surveyed, well, actually, Lyon County surveyed, our property taxes as a city are the lowest of the 20 regional centers that they interview. Our current local option sales tax, when it is implemented, will be at or still below other regional centers. So, people are certainly free to shop wherever they wish, but other regional centers are doing this. The other benefit to the city of Wilmer and to the residents of Wilmer is that over half of the tax dollars that are going to come in for our projects, including stormwater improvements, are coming from people that do not live in the city. So, this keeps our property taxes lower. So, again, I thank you for your support, and I think this is going to be a fantastic stepping stone for Wilmer to continue to grow and prosper. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Speaking in hearing, then I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I'll enter a motion to change the definition of the retail.
Retailer.
Retailer. Thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to change the definition in the published ordinance of what a retailer is. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the polls, same sign. Next motion would, or the next order would be to approve a resolution to introduce the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it.
I'll enter the motion to adopt, sign a number, and order final publication of the ordinance adopting a sales and use tax and a motor vehicle excise tax.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. We're going to take a five-minute recess. The city council is back in order for Monday, June 17th. Next item on the agenda is the annual stormwater meeting.
Mayor, members of the council, I am also pinch-hitting for Mr. Christiansen tonight. So, I will present the annual MS4 meeting information. And again, I apologize, I didn't put this presentation together. So, if it's less than a polished presentation, you have my apologies, but I will do this as efficiently as I can. The municipal separate storm sewer system, which is where you get the MS4, general permit is mandated by the federal regulations under the Clean Water Act. They give that to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and then the MS4 permitting program gives the owners of MS4s, which is the city, the approval to discharge storm water to lakes, rivers, streams, and wetlands in Minnesota. Part of the general MS4 permit from MPCA is that the city creates a stormwater pollution prevention program. And in that, we lay out the different BMPs and action steps we are going to take. Public involvement and participation is part of that. This meeting directly meets that requirement. So, we need to continue to raise awareness of the importance of good stormwater management. I'll give you an update on the status of compliance with the MS4 permit conditions, what the city has done in 2018, what the city has done currently up to this point in 2019, and what does the city plan to do in the future, the next 12 months or so. And then we will allow for public comment on the city's implementation procedures. So, again, what is an MS4? In general terms, the municipal separate storm sewer systems. The MS4s are publicly-owned stormwater infrastructure that's solely for stormwater. It's not part of a publicly-owned wastewater treatment system. So, stormwater does not get treated at a water treatment plant or a wastewater treatment plant. We do not have a combined system. The stormwater infrastructure includes curbs and gutters, ditches, culverts, stormwater ponds, storm sewer pipes, all of that. Again, the background, the MPCA designated in their rules, Chapter 7090, that all cities outside of urban areas with a population greater than 10,000 must obtain that NPDES stormwater permit. We did meet those requirements to be a designated. We did meet those requirements to be a designated MS4. In... For the 2010 census, we had a population, obviously, greater than 10,000. The city originally received approvals of that stormwater pollution prevention program that we designed specific for our city and the MS4 general permit in 2008. The current general permit coverage ran from August 1, 2013, to July 31, 2018. The MPCA is currently in the process of reissuing that MS4 general permit. It's actually in comment right now. They anticipate being able to reissue that in the fall of 2019, but we are just continuing coverage under the expired permit for the time being. So what is the stormwater pollution prevention plan? The city developed that SWIP to address the six minimum control measures that are set by the MPCA: public education and outreach, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff controls, post-construction stormwater management, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So the goal of the SWIP is to create best management practices which will reduce the discharge of pollutants from our stormwater to the maximum extent possible to protect water quality. Because again, stormwater runs off, although it may go into a stormwater pond first, generally all to our surface waters, our lakes and rivers. The MS4 accomplishments for 2018, you'd have to give credit to generally the engineering department on this and what they have done, not myself. They conducted that IDDE, the illicit discharge detection and elimination training for staff. They increased the construction site stormwater inspections, inspected 37 outfalls and eight ponds, and over 4,000 cubic yards of material was collected from the street sweeping program. And they also passed out handouts for grass and leaves that were in the gutter. Just doing more of that public education to get homeowners and those contractors to know that anything that ends up in our gutters does get washed into our storm drains, generally directly into the lakes and the river. When you're mowing, mow in. So that's completely true. This is one of the biggest things that we see, that staff sees over and over, and even a lot of the phone calls they get, that they have to respond to, is when you mow, you just need to discharge your grass away from the street into your yard. Grass clippings are one of the main culprits of those high levels of nutrients. They carry both phosphorus and nitrogen that are moving into our waters and into our surface waters. One bushel of grass clippings, guessing, Mayor, some of you are of the age to know how big a bushel basket is, one bushel of grass clippings can produce up to 50 pounds of algae growth in our nearby lakes. So just that little bit of phosphorus that is in there feeds an extensive amount of algae in our lakes. So when you're mowing your lawn, that's not very much out into the storm drains that does create this algae problem. And I think a lot of our residents can make that connection in seeing the algae blooms in that pea green soup that we sometimes get in our surface waters and our lakes. For the construction side, a lot of the times, we see either missing or inadequate inlet protection. So that would be those stormwater inlets that are those grates in the street that allow stormwater to drain in. During construction times, they need to be protected, so we're not letting all the sediment and stuff from the construction activity run down into them. Vehicle trapping is another thing that we see tracking, coming out of those active construction sites onto the streets. Contractors do have a certain length of time to be able to clean that up. Again, that's an easy one for the public to see, so it's a common one that gets phone calls. And then that picture to the right is actually concrete washout. And so when you're doing concrete on projects, whether it's going to be for a driveway or a basement or whatever it might be, when you're washing out the trucks or the tools you're using, that concrete washout water cannot come into contact with the ground, and it can't be washed again down into the storm sewer. It has to be just contained, and then once it becomes solid concrete, it's easy to dispose of then in a construction or demolition landfill. The accomplishments, the stuff planned for 2019, staff is looking at updating some stormwater ordinances, updating the SWIP checklist, continuing the IDDE training for staff, and increasing both the public participation and awareness and all the public outreach we do. We are in the works already with the Hot Creek Watershed Project. As you know, some of the stormwater in the city of Willmar does run towards Hot Creek and then the Minnesota River. So we're going to work with that watershed project on some public education and outreach things that we can do with them. They've got some great grant funds and some really smart staff to craft some messages with us. The general permit reissuance for 2019, like I said before, this current general permit we're under from the MPCA did expire July 31st. We are running under the same permit right now. The final MS4 general permit is going to come out. It is out, the draft of it. They do hope to have it finalized and approved this fall. It does emphasize permit requirements to be clear, specific, and measurable. So that's working towards, I think, a lot of the plain language that the state has been implementing in a lot of their general permits for several years now. The annual stormwater report, we will submit the annual stormwater report to the MPCA by June 30th and include any comments that are received from the public, notify the MPCA of any changes to our stormwater pollution prevention plan, and then document the people that are present at our annual meetings. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for your report, Sarah. You did a very good job pitch hitting, and we appreciate this. I do have a question. Well, I'll let council ask first if they have any. Council, any questions? Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How closely do we work with the county on this? Do we work closely with other partners?
As far as the education piece of it and those types of partners, or in the rules and regulations that the city has?
I would say both.
Okay. I'll answer this question the best I can because I don't directly do the stormwater program implementation for the city. I am doing some of the public education as far as wastewater and stormwater, both are in my job description. So we are working with any partners from the county or the state or Hot Creek Watershed Project because we all have similar audiences, and we can efficiently hand out messages to all our audiences together. I would say, to my knowledge, the city does not generally work with the county in, like, construction site projects and the SWIPs that the city, because they're... Because they have different jurisdictions. And so some construction projects may... I will take that back. I was going to say they would have a state permit. That's not true. If they're disturbing an acre or greater of land, now within the city, the city actually implements and does those inspections. So any projects inside the city that are going on, to my knowledge, would only have permits and be inspected by city staff, not county.
I... It's... I think it's important to have partnerships, coordination, working with, you know, we work closely with the county on a lot of things, so if we can save dollars and educate together, I think it's important.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly, followed by Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Sarah, I'm not sure if you know this, Gary's here, he might, but we were out sweeping the streets, you know, end of March or April, and then it's been so wet, and then we had a cold snap a couple weeks ago, and the ash trees dropped their leaves. Is that going to affect anything here, or did we catch them in time, or any idea?
Gary might be able to speak to the timing of that. Any type of vegetation, like I mentioned with the grass clippings, the leaves also would carry nutrients with that, obviously, even in the fall when people are raking their yards, we want to try to keep those leaves out of the storm drain, too.
I know the streets were looking really good, and then you drive through in the morning, and geez, you had all these...
Generate a lot of phone calls, too.
I bet.
Yeah. So with that, our approach was, you know, that we encourage people, basically on social media and stuff, that to treat that like a fall leave and take care of your property in front of you. And we swept every day while we can't cover the entire town in the time it would take to clean all those up prior to a rainfall or something. So I would have to say, yeah, some of those did make it to the storm drains and stuff. But, you know, we swept every day as we continued to do, and we encourage homeowners and residents to take care of the property in front of your home. And we do that even with grass clippings and stuff. I make multiple stops in a week and talk to people about grass clippings and stuff.
Thanks.
Councilmember Nelson.
That was just going to be my question, too, with if you see businesses that are mowing in the street or your neighbors are, is there a correct process, or how do you do it? What are you... I mean, to encourage people, are we... What are we doing for additional education on that, because it's still happening?
That's a tough one, because some people don't believe what you're telling them. And so I've had many conversations where they said, well, the street sweeper can come by and get it. Well, it's... It takes about six weeks of steady sweeping to get around town one time, and that's not going to happen. Most people, sometimes you get out there, if you take a blower at the end of the round when you're sweeping, and just blow it back up into the street, or sweep it up or rake it up and pick it up. But, yeah, it's... Some people really, you know, believe in it and buy into it, and like anything, there's other people that just think it's a crock. So, I mean, I can't tell you how many people I've talked to, and a lot of them have been businesses that do that for a living. And we have been guilty of it ourselves. I've talked to our mowing staff and said, hey, look, I'm out here telling people, can't do that, and then we're doing it. So, I mean, we've been guilty of it, too, but we try to stay on top of it.
Is there a fine?
I don't think there currently is a fine, but I don't really know what the ordinance says about it or anything.
Additional questions? Sarah, I know you've been very instrumental in the Lakes Association and along with Councilmember Schwantes as well. And I know that you guys had booth out there. And I know that Gary, myself, Sean, Mr. Holland met with Representative Baker to talk about some things up along the north side of Willmar Lake, and some things we can do there. So be looking forward to that, some... Maybe some changes happening there probably by fall on some vegetation clearing and things like that. And so that helps as well. So citizens, if they have those trees that hang out over the lake, if you can trim those back and get them pulled back in so they're not hanging over the lake so the leaves aren't falling into the lake. And then those people that live along the lakes, don't blow your leaves into the lake. Do the same thing like Gary said, get them picked up, get them out to one of our brush sites and take care of them that way. Don't blow them into the lake. So that's a good piece, too, so.
Definitely.
Anybody else from the council that has any comments? With that, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we receive the annual stormwater report for the MS4 permitting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Additional discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Patty, we're finally calling on you. I bet you never thought you'd be here at nine o'clock tonight, did you? Baker Tilly presentation for hiring of our new city administrator, and a lot of that stuff was public hearings and public meetings, so we had to go through those. So I apologize for taking so long to get through it, but I hope you understand.
I perfectly understand, Mr. Mayor, city council. It was actually good for me to hear this because today I got to spend time with the council, identifying what you're looking for in a new administrator. So for me, it was very healthy to hear the discussions coming from the community, too, on some of the things that are going on in the community and some of the frustrations that they are hearing. So I did not mind sitting here at all through this. For the next couple of days, I am going to be... My name is Patty Hemmenover. I am from Springstead. Springstead has been around, it used to be Springstead Waters, and we merged with Baker Tilly. We've been around for over 20 years working with executive searches. We have done over 1,500 cities, counties, schools, and higher ed recruitments. We love what we're doing, and we love working with our clients, and that's going to come through with the process. We're very compassionate about the process. This is your process. It's... I am here to help and to guide you. Talk a little bit about the process. We have a comprehensive and a structured process. What I mean about comprehensive is the process that we're going to go through is, for the next couple of days, I am going to be spending with the council, the mayor, and staff to get input on putting together a comprehensive brochure, looking to see what you want in your next administrator. This is a very important process for us because that drives what type of person that you are going to be looking for, and for me to go out and recruit for you. Tomorrow, I will also be spending some time with staff to get their input. My philosophy is working with smaller groups and individuals so I can gain as much information from the staff, council, and the mayor. I think that is very important. Once we get that, we are going to be putting together a timeline for you folks to approve. We would like to get that information out on your website to talk a little bit about what our process is. It will take about four months for this process because we are very, like I had said before, it's a comprehensive process. Once the candidates start to apply on our website, we are going to be having a custom candidate questionnaire that they are going to be completing. It goes into a lot more detail than their resume and cover letter. This will go into a lot more experiences that they have had as a city administrator that's been very, very helpful. In the process, we do early due diligence review on the candidates, and we do that a few different ways. We also will be doing a recorded video interview with the top candidates. Throughout the process, we will be in contact with the candidates throughout the whole process. And then we're also going to have them do a leadership and management assessment. This is a very powerful tool to determine if they are going to be a good fit for the city. And then we're going to have structured interviews, which will consist of the city council, staff, and of course, we're going to get input from the community because that is very important to get that input. That input then will be coming back to the council, and they're going to be able to see that the comments that are coming from the community. So that's just a little bit about the process. I will be back to give periodic updates. We're going to try to get as much out there on the website to keep the community informed on the process. But for the first few weeks, it's going to take some time to develop that comprehensive brochure, and then we will be asking for your input to look at it, to make any changes or modifications, and then we will be going out aggressively looking for the right candidate based off of the information that I have received from the staff and from the council. So that's just briefly of just what the process is, and there'll be periodic updates throughout the process then, too.
Excellent. Council, any questions for Ms. Hemmingover? I said that wrong. Hemmingover?
There you go.
Okay. Any questions for Patty? I want to thank you for coming out to Willmar. I want to thank you for engaging services. I know Councilmember Fagerly had requested to have someone new come.
Yep.
So it's good to see a new smiling face. I had an opportunity to meet with you a little bit today. We didn't get to finish our conversation.
Nope. We're going to continue that.
Right. We're a little bit tight on time, so... But I really look forward to that, and I really liked what you talked about, engaging the public. And so if there are members of the public who are interested in being part of that process, they should get ahold of the city administrator or HR director or yourself to make sure that they get included in that process. So thank you very much for coming out to Willmar.
Thank you.
And we hope you're finding our community welcoming, so.
I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to committee reports. First item is public works safety, and that will be done by Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Public Safety Committee met on Wednesday, June 5th in Conference Room One at the City Office Building. The council members Andrew Plowman, Julie Osmus, Audrey Nelson, and Fernando Alvarado were present. Also at the meeting was Public Works Director Sean Christiansen, Police Chief Jim Felton, Fire Chief Frank Hanson, Engineering Administrative Assistant Kelly Doboske, and Shelley Lindrude from the West Center Tribune. The meeting was called to order, and then we received public safety updates from the police and fire departments for the month of May, and those are in... police and fire departments for the month of May and those are included in your packet. We had four different items to, to take action on. The first one, Chief Felton brought forth for approval, authority to submit an application for a surplus vehicle from the federal government. The police department currently has a vehicle used as a command post and SWAT, which is 20 years old and has high miles. A federal property representative notified us of a never issued MATV four by four vehicle that was set for distribution at no cost. The MATV would provide several advantages to the agency such as its protective capabilities, ability to handle rough terrain such as flooded areas or snow, and execution of dangerous arrests or search warrants. A motion was made and seconded to approve the application to apply for the surplus MATV four by four vehicle and the motion carried. I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve an application for a surplus vehicle for the police department. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Osmus.
The next item was the Civic Center Ice System Replacement Project Change Order Number Five. Staff brought forth for approval the change order number five for the Civic Center Ice System Replacement Project. The city contracted with Cornerstone of Wilmer, Inc. for the replacement of the two ice plants at the Civic Center facility. Change order number five in the amount of $7,211 resulted from required modifications to connect new transmission mains to the Blue Line Arena, piping due to location of connections and existing subfloor heating headers. They also had to remove and replace the remainder of additional 610 square feet of resilient flooring in the Cardinal Arena to ensure flooring matches. A motion was made and seconded to approve the change order number five of the Civic Center Ice System Replacement Project in the amount of $7,211. That motion carried. I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a resolution for change order number five. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantus?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember Osmus.
Okay, the next item we talked about was the Wilmer Y Property staging and material. Staff brought forth for approval the Wilmer Y Property staging area and material use for the project from Hoffman Construction. The east portion of the old airport taxiway and service road to the old beacon area will be demolished and material used for the project. A portion will also be used for material storage such as pipe and equipment. The committee discussed Hoffman purchasing approximately 11.5 acres of city-owned property in the southeast corner of County Road 55 and Highway 40 pending planning commission approval on June 19th. So we did discuss, there was a motion and it was seconded to approve the city-owned land, but in the minutes, there is, it was stated incorrectly and it says that we were purchasing the, the land from Hoffman, but it meant, it should say that it was a sale to Hoffman pending approval of the planning commission. The planning commission did not act on that, on that sale. There apparently needs to be more information, so that, we're going to have to leave that out for right now or how else would you like me to handle that? Mr. Scott? We will not be ma, we will not, I won't be putting forth a motion on that sale.
Well, I, I've got a couple of questions. This is really confusing to me. First off, this is the first I heard anything about this. You know, the city had an agreement with Dunick's and it was said that any, that that offer would be extended to anybody else that chose to purchase that property. In the past, we've gone into closed session to talk about those things. We haven't done that on this at all. This appears to me to be very premature to even be in front of the council even for consideration and because we had given very clear direction when we had the issue with the Dunick property. And so I'm confused as to why this, I mean, who would even bring something like this forward? I'm just totally flabbergasted. So, Mr. Scott, do you have any answers?
Mayor, members of the council, I can just say that procedurally for the city to approve a sale of city-owned land to a private party, as appears to be contemplated here, the city would need to introduce and adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale. You'd probably need to approve a purchase agreement with the purchasing party. In this case, it looks like there's also some authorizations for other property the city to be giving, which I would recommend the city do by license agreement. So there's definitely some documents that would need to be drafted here as well as of course, planning commission review and approval of the sale. So I would agree that at this point, it's somewhat premature for the council to be acting unless the council were simply going to pass some motion approving of the concept that's been presented and then directing staff to finalize the, the documents with legal council. But that's certainly not a requirement at this stage.
I mean, is there, is there a direction that the council, that the committee is looking for? I mean, am I missing something here?
If I may.
Councilmember Nelson?
I believe Mr. Christensen was bringing it forth for consideration during the discussion of this. We, we had a conversation about it needing to go in front of the planning commission, believing that it did need to go back there. And so if anything, I think just the concept of do we want to consider selling this, but I'd be comfortable just sending it back to committee at this point in time for further review. But I'm not even sure, I think we need clarification of what the steps should be if that is something that Mr. Christensen wants to, wants to pursue or how do we take the next steps if that, that's what he had brought to us, so. But I, I remembered that we had gone through this before, but I'm not quite sure what the correct steps would be at this time, so.
And if I remember the conversation, I think there was more than just Dunick's that was interested in the, in this land, but.
Yeah, both, both of the properties were, were potentially interested, but I mean, the council had agreed on a price and that that price was going to be offered to whoever
Got the bid.
the bidder was because there were only qualified bidders. So, I mean, I think this minimally needs to go back to our administrator to get hashed out, to get brought forward in the right, in the right process. I mean, the process isn't even right. It's not remotely correct. I mean, that's, I mean, you know, if somebody would have talked to me about this, I would have said, no, you can't do it this way. I mean, that's not the way we do business in Wilmer. So, but no one talked to me about it, so.
I think it was referred back. I mean, I think we did and I believe Mr. Christensen, the planning commission was meeting that night and they indicated that they would not be willing to take action on and that it needed to go back. So what we do with the minutes, I don't know, but it was not the intent of the group to move it forward without the correct procedure.
So the motion that carried, this, that's incorrect? There was not a motion that was made and carried?
There was, there was a motion, but it was not to just, he needed to check it out and to see whether the motion was appropriate or not. But the motion that's in the minutes is referring to purchasing it, so the minutes are not correct also. And so I think we just need to send it back if we can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just 11 and a half acres, isn't that parcel 40 acres?
60.
Is it 60? We were going to have them option to buy the whole thing, weren't we?
I, I think that's a conversation that Mr. Christensen needs to have with us because, I mean, what he brought to us was, was what is in the minutes and that was 11 acres. So do we need to make a motion to amend the minutes, to remove that or what do we need to do to deal with that? Just not, just not make a motion, right? Okay.
Just let it die.
Information.
Take it for information only and then, and then refer it back to the administrator and then someone that knows the process that we follow probably should be involved in it, so.
Well, I think that's a conversation that needs to happen with Mr. Christensen.
Well, I think the council needs to be involved in that too. That's not just Mr. Christensen. And again, I guess we're in the committee process now, so if that's what you want, that's what you can do. Wouldn't be my recommendation.
I think Mr. Christensen needs to work with the city administrator to what the process is, but if we're, if we're interested in what we were attempting before, then it's not 11 acres and I don't know who made that recommendation, so. I don't know that, that the committee has a recommendation either based off from the conversation. I mean, we were taking it from him with what he was providing the direction for, so I think it has to go back to him.
Well, I would encourage somebody from the elected officials to be at the table as well. You have a chair of your Public Works Safety Committee. I mean, I think if that had been properly vetted, I mean, if, if anybody were to talk to me about this, I would have said, absolutely not, you can't do this.
I, I would recommend that Councilmember Plowman have a conversation with the city administrator and Mr. Christensen.
Councilmember Osmus? I think that's probably.
Do we want to move forward on the next two then?
I don't think you want to on the next two either because it's basically the same thing, so.
Well, other than, other than we might just to have, this is just to put property there and what did, we would need some, did you say licenses or something to put?
We'd want a license agreement to store property there, yes.
All three items are, excuse me.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. All three items are with the same company, so I would recommend we send them, we send them all back to be reviewed.
Okay, then they'll come back to Public Works Public Safety. Why, my question would be, why wouldn't we make a motion to continue with just letting them store the equipment there?
I haven't been involved in any of the conversation. I wasn't briefed on any of this. I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Normally, I would be able to give you a recommendation, but no one talked to me about this, so I don't even know what to say. I've been totally kept out of this conversation and I believe intentionally for the reasons you're finding right now.
If I may, I don't believe it was intentional on, on, I'm sorry, but I think the three are related and they are in the process of being negotiated. And so I think procedurally, it needs to go back to be reviewed and to figure out what the next steps are and, and with that, so.
I got nothing.
[laughing].
Sorry. I mean, this is why you need somebody that knows what's going on to be looking at this stuff. And how you guys have now set it up is that isn't being done and that's bad practice. This is very, very poor, this is the same as how you did the hiring of the interim administrator. I mean, now you're in another deal like this, so.
If I may respond, I believe this is a staff issue, that the staff should have been aware of this and it needs to go to staff before it comes to us. I don't think it was intentional that it left anyone out. I think this is a staff issue and it needs to go back and to be figured out what the procedure was. Administrator should have dealt with it and, and with Mr. Christensen, he brought it forward on his own. It needs to go back to figure out what to do. I don't believe it's our job to figure this out, any one of us at the table.
When I look, when I look at the, the third action that we were looking at, basically we, we made a motion to allow Hoffman, who was the bidder of the, of the project, to use the West Old Airport Taxiway for material storage and that they would move it before winter if we needed that for snow removal. That was discussed at Public Works Public Safety. We made the motion, we seconded it. I'm not understanding why we wouldn't just go forward with that. That was what we discussed at Public Works Public Safety to have them do that. I, I don't know where else that gets discussed or decided.
You certainly could make that, certainly could make that motion. That motion would be in order if that, that, I believe your city attorney said you should have a license to do that, so you define how they're going to do it. You know, I think back to, I'm trying to remember when, Rick, you maybe remember, Audrey, remember when we did the same thing with Berg Fabricating? We had a process that we had in place with BergFabricating where we had how they would do it and all of that stuff was all defined and the council approved that process.
And that was part of like, even with the second motion was to allow Hoffman to use the old airport taxiway. They want that concrete and, and the, and the beacon area to have that material and then they'll restore it and it, and, and Sean talked about how he would, there would be specific directions in there of how it had to be, if we wanted them to have it grass-covered and the condition it had to be left in would all be in that agreement. But, okay.
Oh, no.
Make that part of the motion, then. Assigned agreement.
But.
Go ahead.
I think the three were negotiated together and I think they should be returned to be reviewed for the correct process and, and if we don't agree to sell the land, they may not want to do the other items or we may not want them to do the other item. I see the three things, it's one company. I think they should be, it should be returned to be negotiated together, so.
So my question is, is the price the same as what we had agreed to with, before that when we said we were going to offer the property? Did anybody check that to make sure the price is the same?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Nelson. It's got to, got to get sent back. It's got to be done right.
All three?
Done right. All three.
Okay.
In my opinion, but I, I don't vote, so.
If we feel we need more clarification, we'll, we'll get those cleaned up and we'll bring it back. Okay. The next item, item number six, staff brought forth for approval, consideration of bids for project number 1905. The project included the path overlay at Swanson Field. It was originally constructed in 1999 and cracked sealed in 2011. The low areas of the path show more cracking and portions are becoming uneven due to settling. Bids were open for the project with two received. Dunick Incorporated was the low bidder in the amount of $104,532.50. A motion was made and seconded to award the bid project number 1905 to Dunick, Inc. in the amount of $104,532.50. I will enter that motion now. Second.
Motion made and seconded to award a bid for project number 1905 to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of $104,532.50. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
I don't know if anybody will have the answer on this, but just back to that Y project, are we holding it up at all if they can't keep their, their materials there?
No, it's not to me. I don't know. That'd be a question for probably Andrew. I would guess Andrew would know that or maybe the city administrator knows.
To my knowledge, no, it would not, it's not holding up the project.
They're not that far along.
No, not at this point. No, we're not there yet.
We got.
This is preliminary stuff.
Okay. Then we got time to discuss it and clarify it. Okay, the other items that we talked about that were basically just for information was the updates to South First Street water line replacement, the Culvers pothole, which Public Works continues to get phone calls on, that is, that is eating cars and small children, and the Stormwater Project update. There being no further business, the meeting was adjourned at. There being no further business, uh, the meeting was adjourned at 6:47. I would make a motion to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion.
By me.
Councilmember Nelson.
I think it's important to clarify that that Culvers pothole is a private street. It is not a city street. And I think there were concerns about the fact that the city has been taking complaints regarding it, um, and that I think it is being worked through, that it is the responsibility of the leaseholders there. But it's an unusual situation where the, that street is owned by a private party that does not own any other property there. So I'm not quite sure how we ended up with that, but I think it is important that the community understands that's a private, a private issue.
So it, it isn't owned by Culvers, it isn't owned by Cub Foods, it isn't owned by Office Max. None of those businesses, um, are responsible for fixing that, as well as the water retention area. Uh, we discussed that as well, of cleaning that up. That's that little swamp area that's right next to it. That also is by this same owner, and the city has been in contact with them, um, to try to get them to fix it.
And, uh, I, I drove by there today and it hasn't been fixed today.
It has?
Yeah.
Okay.
The potholes are fixed. So it's very nice today. Motion made and seconded, just Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we being asked to accept the minutes as presented, or were, was there going to be, um, a correction made to the paragraph in regard to the land purchase regarding Hoffman?
Ms. Osmus.
Well, we at, at a minimum have to correct the piece where it says to approve the city-owned land purchased from Hoffman. That should be corrected to city-owned land sale to Hoffman, contingent upon the approval of the planning commission. That is the minutes, unless you think it should be different.
I think they need to be amended to reflect that we did not take action on those three items. And I will approve my second with that if the person who made the motion will accept that.
Well, you can make a friendly amendment and remove those three items.
I will do that. I'll make a friendly amendment to remove those three items.
Just remove them.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, just to be clear, and I don't know what was discussed or what the actions were at the committee, but what you should be approving for the minutes would be a record of what the committee did. If the committee did pass those motions, I think the minute should reflect that those motions were passed. The council has not followed up and entered in those motions and made those motions tonight, but you're just making a report of what the committee did, so. That's what the focus should be, in my opinion.
City Attorney Scott, in hearing the conversation here and, and reading through the minutes at more times than I chose to, um, and, uh, taking blood pressure ti, medicine many times, I don't believe they, they clearly reflect what was talked about at the meeting. I did talk with Councilmember Nelson about this, um, after I had saw the minutes, and, um, so minimally, it has to be changed that we're not, there was no conversation to buy property from Hoffman Construction.
Right.
And so it has to clearly state what, what truly was talked about, not what someone thought was talked about.
I agree with that, Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson.
Once again, after we had the conversation, the question was asked that we could not do that without referring it to the planning commission. And so, um, Mr. Christiansen was going to check on that. So the minutes do not reflect what we actually agreed to also, so I don't know what they, what they should say.
You know, as a, as a, as a bit of a historian, along with Councilmember Fagerly, we had this issue of minutes a number of years ago. And it was always a contentious time when you were going to approve, well, we're at right now, when you go to approve what is, what, what, what was done. Um, in the past, it was always, you approved the minutes, and you tried to make the corrections as best you could, and so.
It's gotta take good minutes to begin with.
And that was always the thing, right, yeah, so.
But our, but our, I think, I'm sorry, but our minutes are recorded. I mean, they're memorialized, so whoever's transcribing them should be able to hear what's being said. I don't know if they take, um, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, but they're, they're supposed to.
Short hand.
No, no, transcribe what's being said and not take liberty to change it to their, their thoughts. I, I don't know that, but they are memorialized on electronic device, and that's why we do that. I don't know what happens after that.
So, uh, from what I'm hearing from the city attorney, the motion was in order that Councilmember, uh, Nelson made. I don't believe there was a second to your amendment, um, or was there a second to the amendment?
I'm, I'm not sure that my amendment was correct because I believe Mr. Scott said that they needed to remain in there, but not as they, to me, they're not correct, so.
Just, uh, to clarify my point, I, just whatever the committee did, even if the council doesn't want to do that tonight, should be recorded in the minutes. It sounds like there needs to be a correction because we're not talking about a purchase, uh, by the city. We're talking about a, a sale of city land, so that correction, I believe, is appropriate. Whether the three motions listed in the minutes with that correction are still accurate as a record of what the committee did, I, I don't know the answer to that, but if they are, then I think they should be approved with those motions still intact, with the correction made.
And if you're gonna make that one small, I mean, we talked about it at, in great length. So, I mean, we know that that needs to be corrected, so the motion to file the minutes would be in order, which is on the table.
So I am removing my motion to amend. Is that correct?
Correct. I don't believe you had a second, so.
And we don't need to amend anything in the motion, or need to amend?
We're amending the purchase piece.
Okay. And, but we don't need a motion to amend?
So we have a motion to file the minutes. This is a discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All the same side that motion does carry. Next, we have the Finance Committee. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The Finance Committee, um, met on Thursday, June 6th, and, um, Councilmember Nelson, Fagerly, Plomon, and Osmus were, uh, in attendance, along with Finance Director Steve Okens and Airport Manager Eric Rundigan. We called the meeting to order at 5:15. There were not any public comments. We did have, um, two action items. Um, the first one, um, is a recommended action for the council to, uh, for a resolution to approve the airport, um, maintenance and operations reimbursement contract with the state of Minnesota. Airport Manager Eric Rundigan was present to submit and explain that the agreement with the State Department of Transportation for the airport. The contract would be effective from July 1st, 2019 through July 30th, 2021. The agreement also explains and limits the amount of reimbursement to include 100% of telecommunication costs and 75% of all other eligible maintenance and operation costs not reimbursed by other sources. The state has $56,337 obligated in each of its two fiscal years of 2020 and 2021 for a total of $112,674 for the life of the contract. It was also explained to the committee that the two years are the standard length of the contract's issues issued. It was moved, seconded, and passed to introduce a resolution to authorize the mayor and administrator to sign the contract with MinDOT as proposed, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, uh, consideration of an agreement with state of Minnesota Department of Aeronautics. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Our next item, um, which will require a motion, was that the committee reviewed the 2020 budget calendar as submitted. After a little discussion, it was moved, seconded, and passed to adopt the, uh, 2020 budget calendar as submitted, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the 2020 budget calendar. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. That motion carries. Councilmember Nelson.
The rest are items that we discussed. The, the committee discussed, um, purchasing policy, tax abatement, tax increment, and deferred, and suspense, and agricultural assessments. Purchase policy discussion dealt with the possible increase in authorizing spending limits to parallel state statute as it relates the amount required to obtain quotes or sealed bids. It was the feeling of the committee that due to the change in city staff and the amount of activity happening right now and in the near future, um, that we should, this should be delayed until a future date. The tax abatement and tax increment discussion addressed a better understanding of the difference between the two and a method of education for the general public on those differences. Staff was directed to ask Planning and Development Director to install a section of explanation in their presentations and to formulate a "did you know" section, um, that could be on Rack 8 or, and, um, on the city website. Staff then explained the process involved with deferred suspense and agricultural assessments. All agricultural assessments are basically within the city limits, and deferred assessments are due to age and income and suspense assessments. Sorry, um, are, for property outside the city limits on the fringe. That was for information only. We reviewed our meeting schedule, um, and it is welcome for us to add, um, any topics on the next meetings. We will be meeting this, um, next Thursday, and, um, there was no other business that would be came before the committee, and the meeting was adjourned at 5:50. And, um, I will enter the minutes, um, for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. That motion carries. Next is the Labor Committee. Councilmember Alvarado.
Labor Relations Committee met on Monday, June 10th at 6:15 PM in the conference room. Present were Sean Muske, Chair, myself, Vicki Davis, and Kathy Schwantes, councilmembers. Also present were our Human Services Director Samantha Bachman, Beckman, pardon me, Mayor Calvin, City Administrator Ike Holland, Frank Hansen, Judy Thompson, Public Works Director Sean Christiansen, and Shelby Linderood from the West Central Tribune. Um, it was called to order, um, at 6:15, and, uh, public comment was made by Mayor Calvin standing, stating he spoke with city attorney about being able to participate in the committee discussions as long as he is not bringing a tie vote. He also expressed disappointment that the city deputy fire chief item was included on the agenda as he did not want to fund any new positions in 2019 or 2020. He also expressed the deputy fire chief was a position he requested when he was fire chief and had plans to put that position in the 2021 budget. He commented on the city clerk item on our agenda and said, "We should consider reposting the city clerk position if we were going to increase the pay scale." The next three items are gonna be for information only. Item number three was the department head pay information only. Staff provided our department heads' pay scales from the last four years and was well, as well as the results from the compensation study that was conducted on those positions in 2015. The changes recommended by Springstead was implemented in 2016 to bring the department heads' pay scales in line with the market rates. Springsteen provided a recommendation for a citywide pay structure that covers all positions, which was reviewed in more detail. It shows that our department head pay scales are still competitive with the market rate. Their study also shows that if we implemented new pay scales that incorporated the employer family health insurance premium contribution, as well as employer HSA contribution, it would reduce all existing department head pay scales. Staff will be evaluating our pay equity compliance with Brings, Springstead over the next several weeks and incorporate that information into Springstead's presentation to the council on July 29th. On item four, deputy fire chief position, again, this is for information only. Staff presented a request for a new full-time deputy fire chief that included a proposed job description, justification for the position, and salary range. With increased population, commercial and inspection growth, emergency management protocols, increased training, and public education requirements, and the need for a full-time, quote-unquote, backup chief rather than only available on call, there is growing need for a full-time deputy fire chief. It wa, it was requested that the mayor, fire chief, current administrator Holland, and interim administrator Grommetz schedule a meeting to discuss the next steps and possible funding sources for the new position. Number five, uh, again, information only, city clerk job description. Staff presented a, a request to reexamine the city clerk job description pay scale. The council approved job description from July of 2016, shows the position as a non-exempt pay range seven and supervises a receptionist at the city, at the city hall. However, the letter signed by interim administrator McGuire states the position is exempt, and in the supervisory unit, currently, the clerk is unrepresented. There are also several duties that were removed from the job description in 2016, however, the current city clerk continues to perform those duties, so they should be added back into the job description or assigned to another position. Whichever position those duties are assigned to will require a change in the job description and rescoring of the, of the position. Staff will review other city job descriptions, pay ranges, and exemption status, along with the former city clerk's job description, and bring those to the next labor meeting. Item six is the employee personnel policy, third section. This will require a motion. Staff presented the third section of the unupdated employee personnel policy obtained from the League of Minnesota Cities. Text and black is in the league, and I believe it's in your packet, uh, is, uh, league recommending la, language and text in red. My, my tongue is getting tired, I guess. Text and black is league's recommended language, and text in red is language pulled from our existing personnel policy. A motion was made by Councilmember Alvarado, myself, seconded by Councilmember Davis, and passed to adopt the third section of the new personnel policy. I would, um, accept a motion to, um, pass the third section of the employee personnel policy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the third section of the employee personnel policy. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
There is not a lot of red that's removed, but, um, I just wondered if we needed to, be made aware of those, um, changes.
I'm going to refer that to our Human Resources Director.
Uh, good evening. So the red is what was pulled directly from our current personnel policy. So everything in red is the policy that's currently in place right now. It's just different wording than the league obviously had, um, because we're tailoring it to our city.
So the red is being removed, though?
No, the red stays in. Everything in here is what the new policy will look like. The red, I just wanted to show you what was different from what the league had put out as their form handbook. So everything in red is what we currently have. The wording is in our policy right now. So this is a combination of league verbiage and the current city personnel policy language.
So would you just address compensatory time?
Yeah. So they didn't have that definition in the league's handbook, but obviously, that's something that we offer to our employees. So I pulled that from our current policy, because obviously, we're still offering that to our employees, and they're still using it. Um, and that is time off that employees can bank, um, instead of using overtime and having overtime paid out to them.
Does that meet labor standards?
Yes. So when they work, um, say they work not 41 hours in one week, that one hour, they could choose to have paid as overtime, or they bank one and a half hours of time to be used during slack periods, um, kind of like vacation time. So it's kind of banking extra vacation time, but when they work one hour of overtime, they bank one and a half hours of comp time.
But we had been told that there wasn't comp time, so this is people that are on hourly, not, not people who are exempt?
Yes, only non-exempt employees bank comp time.
It's just, I mean, are, are, do we have a lot of this, or are we managing this, or how does it work?
Yeah, it happens pretty frequently. Um, it happens for all of our, it's. It happens for all of our, it's in most, if not all of our union contracts as well, that they can use comp, comp time in lieu of overtime.
So as an example, the, and just, just something that just recently happened, the council packet was not prepared in time, so a staff member had to work an hour of extra time to get it uploaded. So that employee would have been authorized to either use comp time or take the hour of pay, correct?
Yep. Yep, that hour would be paid at overtime rate, or they could bank the time to use as time off later. Yep.
So that's an example.
I, I understand it. I just, I was, wasn't comfortable with, just a little concerned that, that it accumulate, if, if you have someone that has regular overtime, this could be a burden to a department to have that much comp time or that much time off.
There is a maximum accrual of comp time, and I apologize, I don't remember that off the top of my head, but I can get that for you. But there is a maximum amount that they can bank, and then it just has to be paid at overtime or they have to use it. They can only accrue so much comp time.
Okay?
I, I understand it. I'm, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with it, but I think it's, it's something that we've been doing, and, and that's the reality, so.
Is your concern with the exempt employees, or you're concerned with the non-exempt employees, or both?
No, I think, I mean, we've been told that there isn't comp time for exempt employees. So I was just clarifying. I thought it was being removed from the way I had read it, so that was my misunderstanding, so, okay.
Just no comments. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who keeps track of this, then? Is it you or the finance?
It's tracked in finance in our payroll system.
Okay. Are we up and running with our new system yet?
No, not yet. Our target date for the timekeeping and chronos is September 22nd. We are up and running for applicant tracking, and I'm building the HR right now. The HR will be rolled out in the next month or two. I'm rolling out a few features of it for a few departments who are in need of those features right now. But HR will be up and running within the next, I would say, two months at the most. And then timekeeping, our goal live date, target date is September 22nd.
So we approved this last fall, wasn't it?
Yes. Last fall, it was approved to make the switch starting in 2019. Yes.
And we spent how much money on it? It's quite a bit.
I, I can find that for you. I, okay.
It's a lot of money. I'm just wondering why you couldn't hurry it up, because it's supposed to save us so much time and, and money.
Yeah, absolutely. It, it is a very intensive process to build the system and transfer over all of our payrolls and policies, and then testing it and making sure it's running correctly before we roll it out with all of our employees. So yeah, we, we started building immediately, and we have rolled out applicant tracking. HR will be done soon, and timekeeping will be September 22nd, like I said. And then we still have to roll out the ACA and payroll, so it is a huge project.
So it should work, then?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
It's like the license with the county and the state.
I think, but I think, you know, I think Ms. Beckman did, did, did tell us it's going to take a long time. I mean, I think you might, one time you might even said, "We'll be lucky to get it all implemented in 2019."
Oh, yeah. Yeah. No, it's huge overhaul.
And appreciate your updates that you do in the weekly that, that the administrator sends out telling us where you're at in the process. Appreciate that. Councilmember Nelson, I'm sorry.
It's just, I'm in the private sector.
Right.
And if I had to waste nine months for my software, I'd be out of business, so.
Yeah, well, a lot of people, a lot of people have to do that, though, not just this, so.
Just for comparison, I, I have rolled it out at previous places I worked, and that is, it, we're right on schedule, I guess, as far as how other, how long it's taken at other places I've worked where we've rolled it out. It is, it is, again, it's just a huge project, because just because you're building a new system doesn't mean all of your day-to-day business goes away, and you can't do that anymore. So you do have to build it into your, your current schedule, so, yeah, it is a huge project.
So we're waiting.
Councilmember Nelson.
I just want to clarify, people need to be paid for their time, and I don't mean to belabor this, but do we approve, do department heads have to authorize overtime or approve overtime, overtime, excuse me?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Because it would, this still feels to be as a way that you don't have to pay it, the, and the comp time, I think, just accumulates differently than having to pay out overtime, so, just was curious. Thank you.
Just no comments. All in favor of the motion to approve Section Three of the Personnel Policy, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item seven, employee personnel, and this is for information only again, employee personnel policy, fourth section. Staff presented the fourth section of the updated employee personnel policy obtained from the League of Minnesota Cities. At the league's recommendation, staff is utilizing their handbook template and customizing it to Wilmer's policy and procedure. There being no further business to come before the committee, the meeting was adjourned at 8:04 PM by Chairman Muske. Can I get a motion to approve the Labor Committee minutes?
Are you introducing a motion to file the minutes?
I'm introducing a motion to file the minutes for the Labor Committee.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes, to file the minutes of the Labor Committee. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is, we have a resolution to award the bid to Dunick Inc. for Airport Maintenance Project contingent on the availability of federal funding. Mr. Rundigun.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was here about a month ago to approve bid documents. If you recall, our engineer's estimate was slightly higher than our original CIP estimates that were approved. When we opened bids on the 12th of June, we did receive one bid. It was a qualified bid, as you could see in the letter from Bolton and make included in your packet. Unfortunately, it was 3.27% above the engineer's estimate. However, we're still making the recommendation that we would approve this bid and move forward with the runway 1331 and taxiway Alpha improvements contingent on the federal funds. Again, just a, a quick reminder that we, we receive about $150,000 or were eligible for $150,000 of entitlements each year. You can imagine we'd have to save our entitlements up for years to do a project like this one, and so the FAA also has discretionary funds that became avail, become available towards the end of their fiscal year as projects turn back money that wasn't used, or airports turn back money that, of that $150,000 that wasn't used. And so we feel strongly that we have a good position for these discretionary funds, but certainly we don't know that we get them until we absolutely receive the word from the FAA. So, again, the recommendation would be to approve this bid contingent on those federal funds, and then we would recommend that it is also sent to the Finance Committee for some review, as the funding number for the city increases by just under $5,000 over our original budgeted amount. I would emphasize that our portion of this $1 million project turns out to be about $50,000, and so it's a nice return on, on our investment. And I would stand for any other questions.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to award the bid to Dunick Inc. for Airport Maintenance contingent on availability of federal funding, and what I heard you add to that was referring it to Finance for additional detail.
Correct.
Correct. Comment. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Six Is, zero N's.
That resolution does pass. Thank you, Rick. We kept you here all night tonight. I didn't move you out, so I apologize for that.
It's all good.
It's all good. I just wanted you to know how the Wilmer City Council functions in relationship to Swift County, so.
Good, hearty discussion.
Good, hearty discussion. Discussions are good. Discussions are good. The next item is an update on consideration of Block 25. The council, two meetings ago, went into closed session to talk about purchasing property on Block 25. The council wishes to make it public that it did not authorize in the closed session a purchase for Block 25 as part of the, of the May 20th council meeting in closed session. So we're just making that a, a public statement, just stating that. Next, we have the City Administrator comments. Mr. Holland.
Well, it's a late hour, so we will keep it short. I just, tonight, want to say a few thank yous. It's just that simple. You know, you come to a job, and you work with people, and you make memories, and you make things happen, and you're grateful to have the job, you're grateful to serve. And with that, I, first of all, I want to thank my wife and my family, you know? That's an old military tradition. It's just, you got to thank your wife and your family, because without their support and their love, you couldn't do your job. And so, and I also know this is being televised, so it's proof to my wife I said it, right? But she's great. She's my rock. I want to also thank the council and the, the community for allowing me to serve Wilmer. As you know, I'm not from Minnesota. I came up here, and it was very welcoming, the, the community. You know, people have asked me about that, and this is a very welcoming committee, uh, community. I want to also, I'd like to individually thank every employee, but I can't do that. I would even like to individually thank each department and talk about some of their accomplishments over the last couple of years. But I think, to sum it up, I would just say that they have been very professional, they have been very loyal, and they're dedicated. I don't know how many people that I've brought for this council that have, like Curley Whitman, 41 years. He's retiring tomorrow. Come by and say goodbye to Curley, because he's leaving tomorrow. 41 years, can you believe that? Police officers, 30 years. You know, that, to me, speaks volumes about an organization, it speaks volumes about a community, it speaks volumes about that these people are from here, and they devoted, basically, their life to this community. And so, I know I appreciated that, and, and some, and they're some of the best people. They were very friendly as well, and some of them's kind of funny, which I always enjoy that. You know, my friendships here in the community, especially, I have to say, with some of the church members and Father Steve, I will always remember for the rest of my life, and their support that they provided me and my family. I will also say that, you know, Minnesota is a great state. I've lived literally around the world, as many of you know. I came to Minnesota, never been here before, but, you know, I got pie at Two Harbors. I ate a lot of walleye fish. I saw the Great Lakes. I took my picture with Babe, you know, the Blue Ox, and so I checked off all the things I could. I traveled the entire state from Rochester to the Spam Museum in Austin, which is awesome. I saw that was highlighted in the paper the other day. I was like, yeah, I've already done that. Next, I, I just want to thank everybody for their prayers and support to, to me and my family during a difficult situation and a tragedy. Also, I want to say thank you and blessings to you all and to the city. So, thank you.
Brian, I'm not sure if you're prepared to make any comments, or if you want to wait till the next meeting.
I'm perfectly willing to wait.
Thank you. Under mayor's announcements, I'd like to thank Ike for the two-plus years that he gave us as city administrator. He, he, he led under difficult situations and came in when we were having times when we needed to be refocused, and you helped us do that, so I do appreciate the wisdom that you brought to the position. So you'll be missed, and to Leslie and the rest of your family, thank them as well on our behalf for the sacrifice that you guys made to, to work here in Wilmer, because moving up here was not easy for you and, and being here and being someplace you haven't been before, but I like your story about Two Harbors and eating pie, and I like the story about eating a lot of walleye. So that's good, that's good. Appreciate that, so. Under other mayor's announcements, some of you probably saw in the paper this past week that Rice Hospice had a Volunteer of the Year, and so there'll be a recognition event for her at Rice Hospital at 4:00 PM on Friday. And so there'll be a program at 4:30. The program goes from, the, the event goes from 4:00 to 5:30, so if you're able to make that. And then I just encourage everybody to attend as many of the Wilmerfest activities as you can. We've got a great community celebration happening. I will be out of town, not returning back until late on Thursday. I hope to make it for part of the block party, but I'm heading to Washington to work on some lobbying for some transportation needs within our region, so, so I'll be out of the area, actually leaving directly from here to head down to the cities to catch a plane, so. With that, that's all I have. Start with councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say the Baseball Booster Tournament Committee had their youth tournament two week, two weekends ago. It's 65 teams, and 59 were from outside the area, so they came from Sioux Falls, East Grand Forks, and the city, so. It was a busy weekend and a great tournament. And Mr. Holland, thank you so very much for your time here, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schwantes.
I'll see you at Wilmerfest, and best wishes to Ike.
Councilmember Davis.
Regarding Wilmerfest, I just want to say, looking forward to the parade on Saturday, and if you can't watch the parade in person, you can watch it live on Channel 181 at 10:30 AM, or it's also going to be streamed live on the city website. And Rack TV is also going to record a lot of the other events that are taking place. And also, I want to thank you, Ike, and blessings to you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you stole my thunder. Rack TV will be recording these events, the flag-raising ceremony, the senior coronation, Prairie Woods Band Concert, the block party, junior coronation, kiddie parade, ambassador coronation, Little Kroski Show, and the fireworks. There's a lot of people that cannot make those because of their, just unable to, so it's, it's nice that we have this service. It speaks highly of our Rack TV program. Ike, I've enjoyed working with you, I've enjoyed your sense of humor, I, I appreciate your service to your country, your military duty, and I've really had a, I've, I've always enjoyed seeing you at an event. I've really enjoyed that, and, and visiting with you, and, and you will be missed by me. And I wish you and your family well, and, and Godspeed. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
Okay, I'll start with my, with my goodbyes, and thank you for your service to the city and what you were able to accomplish in the last two years, but just know that you're also going to be missed by your church community. I was dropping off a salad for a funeral, and talking with the church ladies in the, in the kitchen, and they were talking about how they're going to miss you and your family. Back to council news. Today, the Community Center Committee for the Local Option Sales Tax, we took a road trip to look at other community centers. We went to Sartell, Monticello, St. Michael, and Maple Grove. And it was, every time, they're all, they're all good.